Regular meeting of the Lomita Housing Authority for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Can I get a roll call, please?
Three days coming, three days here, three days in. Three days left. Where do we lose Jim?
I'll get him. Yep. She's going to roll call you in a second.
Hi, Rosemary.
Hi.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Gaisley.
Here.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Sagawa.
Sagawa. Sagawa isn't here.
Commissioner Wade.
I'll send her here.
And Chair Upoff.
Here. Okay. Oral communications. Do we have anyone wishing to speak on any of the agenda items? No? Okay, no oral. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Hart.
My task this evening is to put forth some kind of a request. There is a free performance of The Nutcracker at El Camino College on December the 18th. We're particularly interested because two grandchildren, two grandsons of one of our residents are performing in it. And she asked me if I would speak to people who have good connections. And I'm sitting right here with them. We need a little help with transportation for some of the people particularly have mobility issues. So if anybody's connected to any kind of a group that has a van of any kind, we'd love to hear from you. That's my part.
Okay, and I...
Well, first, we had county nurses came out today to give us our COVID and flu shots, so we're all protected for the rest of the year. And sandpipers came and had us picture. We did some paintings. It was kind of just daubed colors of paint around. They tell you where to do it, of course. And it comes out really nice. I don't know if you can see, but it's like a picture with a tree in it. And it's really pretty, considering what you start with, just daubs. Anyway, and we've gone back to bingo on every Monday now if anybody wants to come. It costs a quarter a card. It's really expensive. And we had a Monster Mash, where everybody kind of sort of dressed up, and we had some games and stuff. And then, of course, we had our town hall meeting, where we discussed a few things, like we're going to have knock boxes, so any fire department can get in our facility if anything happens, other than the ones that are local, because we had a problem with that before when they weren't available. And that's it.
Any other questions? Moving on.
It's my friends' kids who are in it, so I know.
Items. We have no public hearings. We're adjourned. Council for Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Can I flag salute? Councilwoman Wade, can you do the flag salute?
Councilwoman?
Oh, Councilwoman Sagawa, sorry. Yeah. I'll tell you what, we'll make it simple. Councilwoman Sagawa is doing the invocation. Councilmember Wade, can you do the flag salute? Okay, yeah, you guys.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Monday is Veterans Day, and so that's why I selected this. Dear veterans, those of you who... Those of us who have not served will never fully understand the sacrifices you've made, both in times of peace and of war. We will never fully understand what you were required to do or how you were able to do it. We will never fully understand the depth of your scars, but we can offer you this. We see you. We recognize your humanity, and we will send you love that is gently, patient, and healing. With blessings and gratitude, we ask that you remember that you are loved, and we thank you. And I would like to recognize my councilmember, Gaisley, who is... was also military. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Kathleen, can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gaisley.
Here.
Councilmember Sagawa.
Here.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
And Mayor Upoff.
Here. Okay. Trevor, can I get a closed session report, please?
Yes. At 5:00 PM, the City Council met an open session, then recessed to closed session for the items listed on the posted agenda. All councilmembers were present except for Councilmember Wernick, and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Okay. Can I guess, get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Presentation. Certificates of recognition presented to the Halloween Home Decorating Contest winners. Emma, over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Councilmembers. Unfortunately, a lot of our winners are under the weather, so they weren't able to make it, but we'll still recognize them and show their pictures and videos that we have.
Oh.
This is the Al Amazon family. There's a video and there's a couple of pictures, but this one pretty much shows what they had showcased in front of their house. And we had 11 entries from the community. Yeah, 11 entries from the community, and our Parks and Recreation Commission viewed them all and selected three winners. This is them holding their certificate in the daylight. Obviously, the night effect is a little better.
It looks pretty creepy in the day. Just mind.
Yeah. And this is the, I think it was the Curullo family. They had boards up on their windows. They had a coffin. And then this is the Danielson family. Their house wrapped around with lights and different attractions. So now our next one is our Holiday Home Decorating Contest, and that's something that is already published for the residents, and our Parks and Rec Commission will also be voting on that. That is it.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. Any comments, council? No? Okay, moving on. Oral communications. Kathleen, do we have any speaker cards?
Yes, George Kivitt.
I'll just be brief here, but Jim, I wanted to thank you for your service. I know we spoke last meeting about your service, and I really appreciate it. Thank you. I wanted to mention, I had signed up for the dial ride this week, and it was so easy. I walked in, Letty led me through it, and in minutes, I was signed up. I'll get my card next week, and it'll be a real... As I was going to say, not an honor, but just a real easy way of getting around town, that extra access when you need it. I'm still driving. We got a couple of cars, but I mean, the service area is pretty large, and then they go to all the other, you know, medical facilities around. And I think it's something that you definitely make use of now and then, but it'd be good just to have that card backed up in my wall if I need it. And I think anybody that could qualify at a dollar a ride, you couldn't get an Uber for anything close to that. So I mean, it really makes sense, and I appreciate the city's having that program. Lastly, I just wanted to, when dealing with the city, it's really, at least in my book, to large degree, access and communication when dealing with different members, whether it's the City Council or members of the staff. And all the members of the City Council, I'm on a first-name basis with all of you, and I appreciate that accessibility and open line of communication that I've had with all of you for years now. But lately, we've had, we got a new city manager, newer city manager, newer Economic Development Director, and also there, the line of communication and the access has been excellent. And that's really, they've really set a good example, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, George. Hey, Kathleen, do we have another speaker card?
Yes. Alan Perlstein.
Sir, come on up.
Thank you. Alan Perlstein, you need my address or something? Anything? Local resident for many years, going on 50. I have two comments tonight. One is a thank you, and another is a suggestion. The thank you is, finally, the long sidewalk in front of my home has been repaired, and I wanted to thank you because of your choice of the Rojas Construction Company, and I talked to them over the couple of days. I was gone for a long time when they dug up and took up the tree trunks and prepped it, but then I was home when they did the cement work. Nice family-owned business, and I'm glad it's all done now. So thank you. Second is a suggestion. About a week ago, I was looking at my emails, and I came across one that the city of Redondo Beach, under the auspices of Athens Waste, who is our provider, they were having on Sunday, the 2nd, which was just last Sunday, free document shredding for residents of the city of Redondo Beach. Well, I know I've got at least five boxes of two decades' worth of old documents, and it's very, very expensive to get them shredded if I have to pay for it myself. So I called Athens, and I said, hey, have you ever done it in the city of Lomita? They said, no, they've never asked. I said, what? They've never asked. I said, so the city of Redondo Beach asked Athens to do this? Yeah. They said, all you have to do is go ask your city hall, or put it in as a suggestion at council meeting, that they, if you talk to Athens, they have done it for Redondo Beach, completely free to the residents. And I think that's really a wonderful service that they can provide for all of our residents, especially when you have lots of documents that you want shredded, like taxes and so forth. Anyway, that's it. So, aye, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just a shameless plug, our document shredding event is this Saturday. Lena, do you have some information? I'm sorry. It was last Saturday, sorry. So we got it out on social media. We'll try to get some flyers out as much as possible for our next one, which should be next, next year, so.
Okay, yeah, so again, kind of what I always say, right? Communication, communication, communication. So, sir, if you didn't hear about it, see about it, you know, again, we've had them, the next one will communicate the heck out of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We need that to be soon, because we just cold through our files, and we had a large, two boxes full of stuff to get rid of, so I completely, I share your pain.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Kathleen, any more speaker cards? Okay. Oral communications and meeting attendance reports from the council? Councilman Gaisley?
I don't have anything tonight.
Councilman Wade?
Let's see. So we had the League Conference a couple of weeks ago. On the 23rd, we all attended the Men of Impact event in Torrance, which was, one of the honorees was our own Mark Warrenick, so that was certainly nice to see. And then on the 24th, we had the South Bay Economic Forecast at Cal C. Dominguez Hills, and then the CAG Board Meeting, which luckily I didn't have to stay for, because our mayor sat through that and cast a vote against giving away our money to Inglewood for a poor project that the businesses involved didn't even want, and our friend Maxine Waters was there in person to oppose this project. So we were with anti-Maxine on that. So thank you for handling that. Then on the 26th, we had the Town Hall with El Merzucci right in this room, which that was really interesting. And then we had Halloween at the park, which is always fun, see the kids being both uproarious and adorable and evil all at the same time, but in the best ways. So anyway, that was very nicely done. On the 31st, we had the ice cream social that Mrs. Wade and I held for our city employees, and thank you to Councilmember Sagawa for helping to scoop. And then on Sunday, we had the annual Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast, which, this was the 70th?
75th.
75th. Wow. The pancakes seemed much fresher than that, but actually, I thought the pancakes were excellent. So Karen and I were talking about this the other day. The pancakes were really good. They did a good job. They used the culinary program from Harvard College, and they always do a nice job. If you ever get invited to one of their meals, go, you will be mightily impressed. So this is where your chefs all over the place that are doing the cooking in the finer restaurants, this is where they come from. And then today, we had, this morning, we had the SBACC meeting, and then on, I will make a shameless plug, on Saturday, my wife has been coordinating what she calls Shop Around the Block, which is Fajoya down to 250th to Cypress, all the way up, all the way to 255th and around. Anyway, so that big block, and so we have like 20 families who are going to be participating in yard sales that day, so to get rid of stuff. Although, as I've said, what really will happen is we will all go to each other's house, buy each other's junk, and then put it back in our garage where it belongs. But actually, it's been really interesting. She's been going around and talking with people, and I told her, you should be a politician, you should run for office, and you should have seen the look of horror on her face. But anyway, we appreciate that. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councilwoman Sagawa?
I did several of those same things.
Yes.
And then the mayor and I went to Redondo Beach for their homeless, they had a one-year anniversary on their homeless shelters, which was very interesting. I also went to the Chamber Mixer, and then Floral 101 and Coastal had a Day of the Dead. What's it called?
Disneyland.
Okay.
Yeah, that thing.
And it was really nice, and they were very, very well-attended. And it was Councilmember Gaisley's birthday on Saturday. That's it.
Ooh. Okay.
And we should congratulate staff on the wonderful job that the Railroad Museum did for Halloween. They had, how many kids? Like 500, I think?
Almost 500 folks.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty cool. And this is something that was staff-generated, and it's really been neat to see this younger generation take the museum to heart and make it pertinent to the modern world. So good job.
I think we also need to thank the park for all that they did for Halloween, for the function that they had over there. It was very well done.
Yep, as always. Thank you. So I won't go through everything. The only one that Cindy and I attended that wasn't already mentioned was the Climate Resiliency Roundtable. That was attended by Supervisor Berger and Mayor Bass. And you know, you think about it, whether it's when it's warm, whether it's freezing, you know, what do we do? What facilities do we have where we can, you know, offer up to people that are in need? You know, this Pasco round, when it was really hot, you know, the library was a place where we would say, hey, you go. Only problem with that was the library was closed on Sunday, and that happened to be one of the hottest days. So again, that was some just general discussion that was facilitated by the COG, and that's all I've got. Moving on, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a very short update this evening. Veterans Day Ceremony will be held at Veterans Park on Monday at 11:00 AM, so please be there. And then I just want to echo the council's accolades for the Halloween event and our city staff. They just knocked it out of the park, as they always do, an opportunity to attend the event, where I ran into each of you there as well, and everyone just looked like they were having a great time. And kudos to our director, Parks and Rec, Emma, whose idea is to have that event during the day. It gives parents another opportunity to dress their kids up outside of Halloween Day. So I commend Emma for that creativity, and thank staff for a great job. So thank you.
Okay, moving on. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda.
We have one.
What?
There's a typographical error in one of them, and I wanted to just read into the record. This is for 7D, right? And it is an amendment to the Black O'Dowd and Associates Agreement, and the change is, it's under B1, and it says, it's not B1, so it's under the resolution, sorry, Section 1, and it's titled, "Section 7, Entitled Term of Agreement, is hereby amended to read as follows." And the corrected form should read, "The term of this agreement shall commence upon execution by both parties and shall continue until completion of the work or until termination occurs pursuant to Section 14 of this agreement. And under Section 14, the council can terminate the agreement at will."
Okay, thank you. So can I get a motion for the amended?
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. Nannas, moving on to scheduled items. Report on impact of City of Grant Pass versus Johnson, U.S. Supreme Court ruling, and that is presented by Andrew, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This report will actually be tagged in between our city attorney and I. Just to give you a little bit of background, this is an item that we're following up with from earlier this summer. This is a request from the City Council to bring back some information about some of the recent rulings that the Supreme Court related to encampments, which is a very simple way of putting the court case that was presented to the U.S. Supreme Court. So the court case is called City of Grant Pass versus Johnson. The direction was to bring back some information discussing what the case involved, what was the ruling, how it impacts local cities like Lomita, what our municipal code says related to the decision. Following that direction, Trevor, our city attorney and I, we met with the Sheriff's Department here at the Lomita Station. It was Captain Guerrero, Lieutenant White, members of our Sheriff's Department, to talk about enforcement of different issues related to encampments and so on. So this evening, we're going to give you an overview of that, of our findings, and some information on that. And Trevor will start with a synopsis of the actual case and how our municipal code relates to it, and I'll wrap up with sharing information from our sheriff's partners, and of course, our sheriff's department partners are here as well to provide some additional information. Trevor.
Sure. So the significance of Grant Pass is that there have been a number of decisions in the Ninth Circuit previously that had severely curtailed the ability of local municipalities to regulate homeless encampments and individuals experiencing homelessness. In particular, the requirement was that any law enforcement would need to first establish that there were no shelter beds, confirm that there was not shelter available, sorry, to first offer shelter to the individuals that they would encounter. And it led to a lot of expense for municipalities having to look into providing... not shelter available, um, sorry, to first offer shelter to the individuals that they, that they, uh, would encounter. Um, and it led to a lot of expense for municipalities having to, um, look into providing, um, shelter for homeless individuals, um, before you could enforce any type of ordinance, restricting their activities. It became very difficult and expensive, and as a result, the Sheriff's Department had adopted a policy of basically, um, not enforcing any anti-camping ordinances within, um, Los Angeles County. And with the decision in Grants Pass, that has removed these restrictions, and it has not found that, um, that, that, uh, local municipalities that want to regulate, um, encampments and individuals, um, sleeping in public, that restrictions are allowed, that they don't violate the Eighth Amendment. It's not considered to be the characterization of an individual, um, but rather is regulating, um, specific activities. And it does not provide carte blanche. Um, there's still a number of constitutional restrictions on, um, what can be done in different municipalities. As part of this process, as Andrew mentioned, we did meet with the Sheriff's Department and asked, you know, if they are noticing anything in the city that they need us to address that would be helpful under our current ordinances. Our current ordinances do include a provision that prohibits sleeping in public spaces, but we do not have anything that's regulating encampments, such as the storage of camping materials or the creation of structures, um, that would, you know, um, be located in public. So, uh, if the council, um, wants to move forward with further regulation, the recommendation would be that it be restricted to, or that it address encampments specifically in the act of camping, um, which would be generally the direction of structures people are sleeping in, or the use of camping paraphernalia such as stoves, uh, sleeping bags, things like that, um, in public spaces. And if there are particular areas where the city wants to see some type of, um, enforcement in particular, those should be identified to us so that we can bring something back that would address those areas in particular. The Sheriff's Department has not changed their policy as the last time we met with them in terms of how they will deal with, um, individuals that they encounter in the city that are experiencing homelessness. That process is, you know, um, they can speak more about it, but generally involves approaching them, trying to find them, um, you know, a place to stay and shelter, um, or connect them with, um, services to help them get housing, and, um, you know, take that stance first, and then, um, other types of enforcement, uh, such as administrative or criminal, are sort of a last resort, um, is what they would do. And that would not, I don't believe, change after the Grants Pass decision. So, if there are particular questions that the council has or interest in particular types of ordinances, we're here to, to respond to that. And I think Andrew has a few more things to add.
Yeah, uh, just like to kind of recap our, um, conversation with the Sheriff's Department, which I'd be remiss if I didn't say they have just been great partners. They've been very cooperative, and it's, it's an understatement. It's, it truly is a collaboration. We've had a great relationship with our Lomita Station deputies for quite some time. The leadership there, I think, is outstanding, um, particularly Lieutenant White and our special assignment deputies, who are out there day-to-day, boots-on-the-ground, working with these individuals, um, who need housing. Um, I, I will say, uh, it's very evident in not only the calls for service that they receive, but the way they handle that their approach has not changed. Uh, in turn, you know, if there are criminal activities, criminal things that are people breaking the law, um, they do handle those, and that's nothing, that's, that's nothing new. Um, there's, this simply, uh, addresses an issue, uh, at the federal level, Supreme Court, of what encampments are and how we classify them. So, that's really kind of the crux of, of the differences here. The Sheriff's Department has a team specially dedicated to handling, um, individuals experiencing homelessness, and, uh, quite frankly, uh, you know, there are layers involved that complicate things when it comes to policy coming down from Sheriff's Headquarters. As you can imagine, there's county legal counsel involved as well, um, that, you know, adds to the, the layers of creating right strategies and the next approach. Um, so currently, uh, the Sheriff's Department is evaluating their approach, particularly in light of the Governor's Executive Order, which he issued on July 25th, um, encouraging cities to, quote-unquote, "clean up" the streets. Um, the Sheriff's Department doesn't have any recommendations at this time. Of course, I'll allow, uh, the lieutenant to come up if he has any remarks he wants to add, or feel free, um, council, uh, to ask any questions as it pertains to the Sheriff's Department and their policies. Um, they did state that they're happy to review any potential changes internally with county council that we, we may bring forward. Um, as Trevor, um, mentioned, that may be an option for you, you want to take. Uh, but with that, the recommendations are simply just to give us, provide us direction on how you feel, uh, where you want next steps to go. Um, this would be a receive-and-file report, um, and either direct staff to return with an update on any significant developments in the law, or LASD policy, or direct staff to return with a draft ordinance addressing camping and storage of possessions in public areas. Um, that concludes our report. I'll be happy to, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Waite?
Do you think we have, should have a pass an ordinance that, uh, you know, other cities have passed?
I, I would respectfully, uh, pass that back to the City Council, and, um, please ask that you provide us direction on what, how you feel. I will, I can provide you facts, um, in terms of what our statistics are on number of encampments that we've experienced. Um, and I'd, I'd ask, uh, our partners from the Sheriff's Department to come up and help me if that's what you wanted. Um, in terms of this, the style and, or what would be entail, I'd ask the city attorney, uh, to provide input on, on what a potential ordinance would look like.
Okay, 'cause I'll give a little backdrop, and I'm sure, I'm sure our friends in the Sheriff's Department will recall, back in December of last year, we had called an encampment, call what you were, on Oak Street, right? We brought in city staff, we brought in the, our partners from the Sheriff's Department, brought in Laza, brought in, uh, somebody from Janice Hahn's office. And again, the discussion was, "Hey, what can we do?" Uh, the attorney at that time said, "Hey, the only ordinance that you had," or "You didn't have an ordinance, and to address that scenario, we would have to have that person deemed a public nuisance. Go get a judge to say, 'Yea, Barry, you're a public nuisance,' and, and you could do something about it." Now, I recognize, you know, the sheriffs will enforce crime, right? So, if they see something happening, um, they'll, they'll respond accordingly. But at that time, and, and again, this was before Grants Pass, right? So, it was sort of, "Hey, you really can't do anything," right? So, then, we had Grants Pass, and we did meet with, you know, um, we met with the supervisors, we met with Sheriff Luna, and, and this is all about compassion, right? I mean, I don't think anybody's intent is to, you know, give somebody a whole lot of citations, and they're just going to go someplace else, right? That's not the intent, right? And you mentioned the Sheriff's Department, you know, the, the host teams are recognized as, for their expertise in dealing with this. But I guess I would just offer up, in that instance, we were told that, "Hey, we couldn't do anything," because of Grants Pass, but now, let's say we pass Grants Pass, "But we couldn't do anything because we didn't have an ordinance that would, uh, at least facilitate us doing something." So, now, we, we actually have a, an ordinance that would facilitate us doing something?
We can bring something back. So, uh, like I said, if you want to bring something back, the, the missing piece versus what a number of other cities have would be something that would address, you know, encampments, people, you know, constructing things or having camping materials, like on a sidewalk or in a public park, you know, these types of things. You know, part of it, too, will be, um, if we do put forward something like that, there are strict obligations about providing notice before those things can be collected, and then we have to store them. They can't just be, there's a cost involved with that. They can't just be discarded or thrown away. So, we can bring something back that would address those, that would give you some ability, um, to, to deal with that. Um, but there, you know, there's pluses and minuses dealing with it.
Yeah, I would offer up, that's our last resort, right? I mean, it's, it's, hey, ideally, and I've called the Laza, they come out, they'll, you know, engage with the people and whatnot, and offer, you know, facilities and whatnot. But again, like I said, this is really a last resort, but I'd like to, like to have something that we could facilitate that last resort. Again, just, you know, and keeping in mind, we're all, this is very compassionate, right?
Yes.
We're not simply going to go, and again, that was a discussion that we had with Sheriff Luna and the supervisors. That's the whole intent of this, is, is not to go, "Hey, you're, you're, you know, sleeping on the sidewalk, or you're, you're, you're homeless, and now we're just going to cite you." So, that's not the intent, but I would, would offer up, I think we should have something that, if it's needed, again, back to that Oak Street, that we have something.
Should we wait for the, let me rephrase this. I think we should wait for the Sheriff's Department to be ready to do something, and, and I know they're still, they're still considering what they think an appropriate policy is, so I, I don't want us to adopt a policy that they're stuck implementing that's a problem. So, I, I, I don't see a problem with us holding off while they, while they finish their work, because I know that's something that's underway. That's my understanding.
I, I, I will, uh, look into passing an ordinance to protect the citizens of Lomita.
I, I would like to also look into the-
Okay, well, I'm the odd man out, but I'm still going to say, I think this is a, a bad idea to go marching ahead before we're ready.
Well, again, I, I think we're, we're, everything we, you know, if, when they bring back something to the council, everything we're going to do is going to be in lockstep with the policies of LASD.
Before you give direction, do we open the public?
Oh, yeah. So, let me open up. Do we have any speaker cards on this, Kathleen? Okay, thank you, Trevor. Okay, bring it back to the council. So, we have a direction from Jim, direction from Cindy, myself. Bring something back to the council.
If you're, uh, the, the phrasing I think I would suggest would be adding an unlawful camping section that would state, "It is unlawful for any person to camp or maintain an encampment in or upon any public property, including any street, sidewalk, or park." Keep it simple, and then we'd include definitions. Would that fit the type of ordinance you're looking for?
That's my motion.
I'll, I'll second that.
So, that's to, uh, direct the city attorney to bring back a draft ordinance, um, along the lines of what was just described for consideration by the council.
Okay. Okay, that's the direction. Moving on.
Uh, but we didn't-
Need a motion? Okay, motion?
Got a motion.
Motioned, I seconded.
Okay. Barry, you've, no?
I'm a no.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Motion passes. Okay, moving on. Okay, we good? Right? Allocation of additional funds for upgrades and maintenance of the Cypress Water Production Facility?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, this, this next report is, uh, just an update on, uh, our, well, not an update, it's, uh, it, it's an item that will substantially enhance our progress in the, our Cypress Water Facility project, uh, that kicked off some years ago. Uh, we're in the final stages of it, and I'm looking forward to giving you this report. And I'm going to turn it over to Lena to, uh, to provide you with some photos and close this report out. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, here is, um, so I'm going to be showing some before and after photos as I'm speaking. So, um, this morning, the Water Subcommittee consisting of Mayor Apoff and Councilmember Segala, along with some, um, staff from the City Manager's Office, the Water Treatment, and Hazen and Sawyer Teams, went to the Cypress Water Production Facility to get an update on this project. So, as you know, Hazen has an expanded role to provide onsite operational support and project management to help us see this GAC system installation to completion. So, much progress has taken place over the last six months, and overall, we are excited to report that mechanically, we are very close to the finish line. We're just waiting on a couple of parts that we anticipate receiving by the end of the year. I'll get into that in a little bit. So, as you know, this project adds four granular activated carbon tanks to improve Lomita's water quality by filtering, filtering out contaminants in the water after the facility shut down in 2019 due to the detection of benzene. Most notably, this, uh, project will also assist in the removal of PFOS, which has become an increasing contaminant of concern. Once the final components of the project are in place, staff and Hazen will proceed with testing of the GAC for purposes of obtaining the permit to operate the facility. We have been in contact with our regular, regulators and feel confident that our project has met all of the permitting standards required by the Division of Drinking Water. Hazen is also developing a GAC system standard operating procedures, and will provide training to our staff on how to operate the facility. Once the plant is operational, Hazen will also be available to support the city and hand off the project back to staff. As far as next steps, SCADA, uh, the SCADA system upgrades are currently underway, and the city has purchased the VFD and two other valves that are, that have deteriorated during the time that the system has been offline. We anticipate receiving these key components, as well as appointing a new Water Operations Superintendent by the end of the year. There is also a backup generator on wheels that needs to be manually connected by staff during a power outage. We would like to either modify this one or purchase an automated generator to minimize, uh, potential impacts to water service. In its current state, staff needs to monitor alerts from SCE, and it would take about 20 to 30 minutes to bring the system back online, um, when there is a power outage. And that's not counting travel time if it's off-hours and standby needs to come in. As far as securing the system, it is also recommended to increase the height of these walls by the GAC cylinders or to add metal fencing. And then, the current security cameras are not compatible with the new technology, and so, they need to be upgraded into a new, uh, security system. We also want to consider some shields to protect the equipment and the materials used in the GAC from the outdoor elements. And, um, it is also recommended to have epoxy coating to make the floor slip-resistant. So, by investing in modernizing our water infrastructure, Lomita Cypress Water Production GAC will be a one-of-a-kind facility that will help ensure safe and reliable access to drinking water, reduce future costs, and maintain efficient operations. And so, at this time, it is recommended that the City Council appropriate an additional $400,000 plus a 10% contingency for unexpected costs in the amount of $40,000 for a total not to exceed $440,000, uh, exclusively of previously-approved funding from the Water Capital Fund for these upgrades, security, and maintenance of the water production facility. Thank you.
What's the timing? On, on, on just this portion?
On going live or just getting the parts by the end of this year, and then, we would have to do testing, going through the permitting process, so potentially spring, late spring would be my guess.
I had a question. You said that if the power went down, we needed a generator. How much would one cost that was automatic?
I don't have that estimate. Uh, we would have to look. We would want to use the current generator, see if we can modify that one, and if not, then we'd have to look at an automated one, getting a completely new one.
Because I would think in the long run, you're having to pay people to leave their house and overtime and everything else.
So, Hazen and Sawyer's involved?
Yes.
With all the work? Okay.
Yeah, no, I'll just say, you know, as noted, Cindy and I were at the facility today, and it is truly going to be state-of-the-art, right? And it's going to be a showcase. So, you know, something when it goes online, you know, in the spring, we should all be proud of, right? A lot of hard work's gone into it, fair amount of money as well. But again, I think it's going to, it's going to, when it goes online, it's going to be something that's really going to serve the community. Okay? Okay, speaker cards? George?
George wants to speak.
Any of the, you that've been on the City Council or speaking before the city know this has been a real interest of mine going back over a decade. And originally, I was very much against this system, and it caused a lot of ruckus for, for example, for the Chamber Commerce. I happened to be the president of the Chamber at that time, and I think that's a good part of the reason we lost our funding from the city. But that's a side issue. Um, I did take the recent, um, water tour. I was one of two people. Um, I was, I can't say I was appalled, but I was very surprised there wasn't a greater interest, uh, because it's such a substantial part of our infrastructure here, here in Lomita. And I do have, um, some background with automated backups, uh, power generation. Uh, I used to be, and this is a prior career years back, but I was a senior computer operations analyst for Nissan, before that, for Carter-Holly Hale Stores for their data center, uh, which supported 12 department store chains, including the Broadway, Neiman Marcus, Capels, what have you. And, uh, backup generation is extremely important. Uh, for example, Carter-Holly's Hale Stores, we had a 30,000-gallon diesel tank onsite that would automatically, uh, you know, feed into a whole bank of diesel generators that, in a split second, we had battery backup also for the short interim. that in a split second, we had battery backup also for the short interim, so that our computer systems, and there was, this was over acre, couple acres of computer systems wouldn't go down. And there's no reason that we shouldn't have something similar at this site. It's that critical, our water system. So I'd be very much in support of automating that backup, electrical backup. I don't see any reason why we shouldn't do that. And another thing that I noted when I was at the site, I could have climbed over those fences in 30 seconds or less, and I'm a 68-year-old man. I could have done the same thing when I was seven years old. To me, in my mind, that's a very unsecure facility. There's nobody on site, they have cameras and such, but in a minute, somebody could be inside there wrecking havoc. It needs a better security at the site. Higher fences, barbed wire, I don't know what you need, but somebody that's really in tune with the site's security should take a strong look at that facility, because it is, in my mind, it's not a secure facility at this time. So, and hopefully, we can do this without too much work in the way it costs, because I was looking at my checkbook registers from a decade back, and looking at all my utility bills. My electric bill is actually less than I used to pay, and I have less people in the household now, but my water bill is the one bill that has exponentially increased from over a decade ago. You know, the electric bill's in line, gas has gone up somewhat, but the water has just gone through the roof, and we got to get a handle on this. We really do. And once it's all complete, it'll be a good thing, I understand. But this is a project that's been over a decade, and we've only had full use, we've never really ever had full, real good use out of it, because there was always problems. So hopefully, we've got, you know, new people on staff, we've got, you know, Lena running the public works area. I know she's, she's a very detailed-oriented person, I could tell, and I just hope we finally get a handle on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathleen, any other speaker cards? Okay, bring it back to the council.
I would support staff's recommendation.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to approve staff recommendation, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I agree with George.
Okay.
You agree with what?
I agree with George.
I do, too, definitely.
I think everybody in town agrees with you on that.
Yes.
It's been a long time, and glad to see we're finally almost there.
Okay, moving on. Discussion and consideration to adopt an ordinance to incorporate by reference the amended Title 32 of the Los Angeles County Fire Code, presented by Adrian. Over to you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Apoff and City Council members. I just have a brief statement, so I don't have a PowerPoint presentation. The item before you is the first reading of an ordinance to adopt the Los Angeles County Fire Code. It is customary for every three years for the city to adopt the county's more restrictive building and fire codes compared to the state codes. The fire code was not ready at the, at the time the council considered the building code at the start of 2023. It was always the plan to bring this item to you when it was ready. It just fell off the staff's radar. We scheduled the item as soon as we were made aware of the issue. In the meantime, the state fire code has been in effect. We recommend that the city attorney read the title, introducing the first reading of the ordinance, and direct staff to bring back the item for a second reading at your next City Council meeting. I'm available for any questions.
Kathleen, do we have any speaker cards? Okay, back to the council. I would move that we adopt ordinance number 864 as described by.
Second.
This will be ordinance number 864, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lomita, California, amending Section 3-1, Fire Prevention of Title III of the Lomita Municipal Code, adopting by reference Title 32 Fire Code of the Los Angeles County, County Code, incorporating by reference the 2022 edition of the California Fire Code with certain changes and amendments thereto, and finding the action exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, that was the motion, that was the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did we take public comment?
Yeah.
Was there any public comment on this?
Yeah, I asked.
We're good, okay, good.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, moving on. We are adjourned.